Okay, so it's 4:45 PM and it's January 25, 2022. Just want to announce we're live captioning our meeting, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So with that, I call our meeting to order, the work session in the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for January 25, 2022, before I call roll. Mrs. McGrath, do you have a song to set the mood?
Yes, I do. The title is not about budget or money. It's called Side by Side, but the opening lines are about money. Oh, we ain't got a barrel of money. Sing along with me.
I don't know the words.
But we'll travel along, singing this.
Singing a song.
Side by side. Not old enough. Okay, made a big hit out of that in the sixties maybe.
Wow.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Well, we certainly expect to be side by side as we learn more about our financial picture and move forward. So Ms. Grineau, you should take that as a good sign that we'll be side by side. Thank you, Mrs. McGrath, for doing that. So for the record, I am going to call real call of board members. I do not see your student trustee, Mr. Evans, online, but if you're there, Mr. Evans, please shout out. If not, moving on, Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present, and perhaps you missed the first line of that song. It is, oh, we ain't got a barrel of money.
No, I heard that. Yeah, I think probably we all did. But moving on, Dr. Norene?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Here, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Winn?
Present, here.
Thank you. With my presence, full compliment of the board is present with seven members and Mr. Evans is not with us this afternoon. So what we have for our work session is a presentation for our fiscal year 23 budget. Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenter this evening?
Yes. President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests that are with us here this late afternoon. As you stated, this presentation will be a budget update as we continue our process to develop a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. It will also be, before that, however, it'll be a discussion on an expenditure limitation so that we all have a same understanding of what it is as we go in to discussing the budget. Kim Grineau, our interim chief financial officer, will lead this discussion. I'm not sure if she's enlisted to help of anyone else, but I expect mostly to hear from her. So we look forward to your engagement and conversation and feedback as we are, I wouldn't say we're in the home stretch of this process, but we're certainly maybe rounding the, rounding the curve heading towards the home stretch. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Kim Grineau.
Thank you. And from what I understand, we'll save questions till the end of the presentation. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grineau. Go forward.
Thank you so much, President Sullivan and Dr. Gonzalez. So good afternoon, also to the members of the board. As you heard, I am Kim Grineau and I am the interim CFO for Maricopa. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to share this update on the 23 budget and budget development process. I do want to thank, though, Mrs. McGrath for that song because I think side by side and we're all in this together, and I don't have a money tree planted out back to pluck off, I think is definitely the theme of this presentation, as any of you who have looked at it have probably figured that out. And I will, unfortunately, you will have to listen to me for the next several minutes on this presentation, but I assure you, I am just the presenter. This work is the culmination of many different individuals and groups that came together. You'll hear a little bit more about that when we talk about the Advisory Budget Council. So although I'm the voice you're going to hear, I'm hoping I'm doing everyone else justice as well as I walk us through this information. And so with that, Elsa, if we could go to the next slide. As Dr. Gonzalez shared, we do have really two topic areas on today's agenda. The first portion will be about expenditure limit and the second on update on the fiscal year 23 budget. As Mrs. Sullivan intimated as well, as I was preparing my notes and going through all of this, there is a lot of information to cover. And so again, we'll share information first about the expenditure limit and really how it shapes our budget conversations during development. And note that I think today's conversation is far more about the fiscal year 23 budget that we need to explore. And most certainly, if we determine that we need a deeper dive into the expenditure limit conversation, we can set up a work, a work session in the future for that. For any of you who's familiar with it, that's a whole different rabbit hole all unto its own. So we want to make sure we get to the budget update as well. So we'll go to the next slide, Elsa. Again, to kind of echo some of Dr. Gonzalez's comments, we did find it important to bring more Maricopans up to speed on the expenditure limit and how it constrains or what kind of constraints it puts on our budget, certainly when we're discussing different aspects of the budget. So with that, we're going to jump on into it. And so next slide, please, Elsa. So what is the expenditure limit? Kind of the nuts and bolts of it is it's an Arizona constitutional provision that was passed by voters and went into effect in 1980. It essentially limits the rate at which governments can grow using local revenues, and you'll see more about local revenues in our next slide. The rate of growth is set by the type of government, whether it's a community college district, K-12 school district, county, cities, towns, et cetera. For community college districts, our rate of growth is based on FTSE and inflation, which for this purpose is the GDP implicit price deflator. Have to say all those things three times fast. And that calculation does, or that the FTSE component of that does lag by two years. And so, for instance, it's enrollment and inflation from fiscal year 21 will define the fiscal year 23 expenditure limit. There's a little bit of a nuance to that, which we'll talk about in a minute. The next slide, please. So the question that we always get is, are all expenses subject to the limit? And the answer to that is no, only up to the amount of local revenues. So then, of course, the very next question is, what are local revenues? And of course, they're not clearly defined in the Constitution. The Constitution does, however, define what is not considered local revenues. And those that are not local revenues are tuition and fees, federal and private grant revenue, donations, general obligation bond proceeds and interest. And then local revenues essentially become everything else. So for Maricopa in particular, that would be property taxes, state aid that we get or any state appropriations we receive from the state of Arizona, state and local grants, and then a lot of other auxiliary activities, which again, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes. So if we go on to the next slide, please, Elsa. So then, on kind of the flip side of it, there are some expenses which can be excluded as well, and they come from either the constitutional spent or they come from statutory changes. And under the Constitution, expenses that we can exclude include debt service payments, long-term debt obligations, and expenses for building and land purchases or construction. And then via statute, we have the ability to exclude expenses for Prop. 301. Proposition 207 expenses are also included. For any of you who recall that ballot language, it actually specifically had the exclusion noted in the ballot language. And then the third category we have there are expenses related to entrepreneurial activities. And that was done via legislative action, I would say a handful of years ago, where we're able to exclude some of those activities now. And if we go on to the next slide, please. So community college districts are allowed to carry forward excludable revenue, which is unexpended in the year in which it was received, and that can be used as for future capacity for expenditures into, again, future years. I do want to make sure that everybody realizes this is not to be confused with budget carry forward that we talk about in Fund I. We oftentimes talk about the three and a half percent that we allow carry forward from one year to the next. This is not the same thing. This is capacity within the expenditure limit. This carry forward is accumulated by fund and by type of revenue. At the end of the day, though, our expenditure limit is based on a $1 amount for the entire institution, for the entire year, all funds. So this is really a reporting exercise that we do for the auditors as part of their process. So if we can go on to the next slide, please. The next thing we want to do is to give a look at Maricopa's expenditure limit carry forward. And again, we do have it presented by fund we've given a few years back, starting in 2017, really to show the trend over the years. The point of this slide really is to show that our current trajectory is problematic. If we look at preliminary numbers for '21, projected numbers for '22 and '23, it shows that we really start having potential issues with our general fund coming on fiscal year '23. Again, if you look all the way over to the right, there is expenditure limit capacity in other funds. We do have the ability to move some things around, to move some expenses around within the funds that are identified. However, that ability is limited. I want to also point out that in '22, we do have some expenditure relief passed by the state legislature last year, primarily due, or really due to, the pandemic. It will allow us to exceed our expenditure limit by 57.4 million at a cost of a $20,000 penalty. And so we will, we do plan to take advantage of that. And then if we look at '22 and '23, we are using the same level of revenues and expenses, no lost revenue coverage by HERF, no legislative relief. So these, I would say, we tend to look at as our worst case scenario, and we do anticipate some, hopefully, some relief in this coming legislative session as well. And we'll talk about that towards the end of this section of the presentation. So with that, Elsa, we can go to the next slide, please. So really, then, what does this mean for Maricopa? So that first line, and I apologize for the technical terms in that enrollment losses are a double whammy for Maricopa, does, of course, have a lower excludable tuition revenue in the year of the actual loss, and then it will lower our expenditure limit two years later. Now, again, there is a nuance to this in that we use a five-year rolling average for FTSE. So the impact of the decline in enrollment from '20 to '21 is lessened slightly. However, it still is going to result in a lower expenditure limit in '23 because the decline was significant, as we're all aware. The other point of this is that raising property taxes as a go-to for increasing revenues to cover new expenses is really problematic for us because it does cause issues or potentially cause issues with our expenditure limit, and it will use remaining carry forward capacity very quickly. Really, what it's doing is it's increasing non-excludable revenues while not growing excludable revenues. And then the last bullet point is, of course, it's not lawful for Maricopa's governing board to adopt a budget which violates the expenditure limit, and absolutely, we would never ask the board to do that. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. So the next slide, please. So addressing the expenditure limit, there are different ways that we can look at this. And if you fast-forwarded through any of the presentation, you'll see that some of this is built into some of the scenarios we're reviewing. We can, of course, raise tuition and fees. Those are excludable revenues. We can, of course, reduce expenses. We do have a few items, and I think that they have been brought before the board as part of the legislative agenda that we are trying to get through, and I understand that bills are starting to get formed and dropped for these, at least a couple of these. One is increasing the weight of CTE FTSE to higher than 1.3. For a very long time, CTE FTSE was calculated the same as, as regular FTSE, so a nursing class credit would be considered the same as an English class credit. And a few years ago, we had that, we got that changed successfully to now weight those at 1.3. So there may be an effort for us to try to increase that to 1.6 or even 2.0. We are also looking at potentially updating the calculation of FTSE. Currently, it is defined as total credit hours divided by 30, which is considered a full-time FTSE, if you will. Nationally, it's typically at the 24-hour rate, and so for expenditure limit setting purposes, we're trying to see if we can get that updated to reflect a 24-hour credit hour FTSE. And then also, again, that last one, seeking an additional reprieve for fiscal '23, as, of course, we're still impacted, believe we're going to be, still be impacted by the pandemic. So we'll see how those go. And then that very last bullet point is something that we wanted to make sure we shared, and this will certainly be into the future. And that is another option we have under the Constitution is to consider asking the voters of our county to reset Maricopa's base expenses. And I will share, as noted there, Pima Community College District did this in 2020 and were able to get it passed by their voters. If, in fact, we did this, we likely wouldn't do this until 2024. I actually drafted this presentation last year, later in '21, and now I'm, we're already in '22, and so there's, it's not a great likelihood that we will be able to get anything on the ballot this coming November. So we would look at this in '24. And if we did that, it takes, affects the following fiscal year, so it wouldn't be until '26. So I would need to just point out that that means there's no immediate relief, that if that is the avenue that we head down, we won't feel the relief of that or the impact of that until into the future. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. So and actually, that was, so that's the end of the section for expenditure limit. It was a lot of information. It is a very challenging topic. It's a challenging topic for us to explain to everyone else, as well as it is to actually do the calculations and the reports, and I think also challenging for people to get all of the different nuances and aspects of it. But with that, and trying to have that as kind of a baseline for the next part of the conversation, or informative to the next part of the conversation, we'll go right into the fiscal '23 budget update. And so next slide, please, Elsa. So the first thing we wanted to do was to illustrate the shared governance approach that was used for the fiscal year 23 budget development, and what you'll see a little bit later in the presentation. And we did want to talk about the establishment of the Advisory Budget Council, which you'll hear me refer to often as ABC, and that, of course, was set up by Chancellor Gonzalez. Its purpose is to discuss and provide recommendations to the, and funding priorities for budget, for the budget development, for final adoption by the governing board. The commitment is to inclusivity and transparency throughout Maricopa as the budget recommendations are prepared. And of course, the work of ABC is supported by the district budget office and input from various task forces. It's a very, I think it's a well-rounded process, so I'll be interested to hear additional feedback. Next slide, please, Elsa. So the membership of ABC is many and broad. It does include a wide range of roles and locations within Maricopa. It does include college presidents, district office leadership, faculty, adjunct faculty, staff senate, and chairs of senior councils. And there are three tri-chairs, myself, along with Dr. Olson, president at South Mountain, and Dr. Radisich, faculty at Glendale. The next slide, please, Elsa. And so to get ABC familiarized with the district-wide budget, including revenue streams and system for expenditure priorities, we had several sessions held over the fall term. We had presentations from task forces or specific content areas. For instance, prior to the role I'm in now, I provided a presentation on HERF funding. I know we had presentations from HR on primarily the compensation plan. We had, Darcy and her team provided a presentation on workforce programs for all of the different workforce buckets of funding. And then for, specifically for fiscal '23, the budget options, there were six items, six options that were considered by ABC, and they were developed in multitude of different ways. Questions asked at ABC would inform another option, for instance, that was created maybe for the next session. And we have been meeting essentially every two weeks for the last several months. And that work is the culmination of what you're seeing in today's presentation. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. So part of what ABC reviewed are the different aspects of the revenues and different combinations of revenue options that could be considered. And so, of course, I've got just a few listed here, property taxes from new construction. And if you'll think back to comments just a few minutes ago, increases beyond new construction continue to exacerbate expenditure limit constraints. We did talk about a potential for tuition increases and differential tuition, and both of which we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. And then also the possibility of using HERF funds for one-time bridge funding. And we'll go to the next slide and look at expenditure considerations. And of course, top of the list are potentials for budget reduction, Proposition 201 funds potentially being used for bridge funding for operational expenses. And then we also talked about potentially using some of the funds in the capital allocations from the tax shift, assuming, of course, that the board continues to support the tax shift. Of course, ensuring also, too, that we will continue the deferred maintenance program as the tax shift was initially funded, or primarily funding for. And this could replace the need to transfer general fund resources to capital, and you'll hear, again, a little bit more about that later. So lots of things we'll hear more about later. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So the Advisory Budget Council, the budget development process in particular, we agreed to further evaluate four of the six options. We did document pros and cons for each. And of the four, we were asked to evaluate and rank those options from one to four. And the table that you see in front of you were the results of those rankings. We did have 85.7% of the members did actually rank the options. So option six came out as the number one with an average ranking of 1.17. You'll see that there were no rankings below two for that particular option. The next highest option, next preferred option, I'll say, had an average ranking of 2.17, and it had mostly twos, and then 1.3, 1.4, and 2.1. So fairly consistent. And then you can see the results from options three and five as well, which were the least preferred of the four that we chose to further evaluate. And so if we could go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And so after further discussion on where those results came out, ABC agreed to forward the top two ranked options to the chancellor for his consideration. After reviewing both options, the chancellor did support the top-ranked option, and we then took that to the chancellor's executive committee, which was reviewed and supported by that group as well. And that is the basis for the option that you'll see in a couple more slides for the fiscal '23 budget direction. So if we can go to the next slide, Elsa. And before we share that one, I did want to share what the current state looks like for our finances, if we don't make any changes and continue on our current path. The basic assumptions that are included in this schedule are that we will accept the property taxes from new construction, and that is, for fiscal year '23, it's estimated to be about 12.7 million. Other new, other ongoing expenses do include the strategic compensation plan approved by the governing board last year. And then, well, and then I'll point you to the, kind of the pink line in the center. You'll see that by simply doing this and not addressing anything else, we continue to increase the deficit and use of fund balance. And in continuing along this path on that very bottom line, you'll see if we were to do this, we would actually run out of fund balance during fiscal year '26. I will remind everyone, too, that this is a budget and not actual, so there is always room for overestimating expenses, but there's also room for underestimating revenues. So it is a projection, an estimate. And so then this next slide, then, actually, Elsa, if you can go to the next slide, please. So this schedule, then, is the recommended option and is providing the direction for the budget document. As of yet, that is coming to the governing board for first read in April. And of course, that's depending on any further discussion in today's sessions or any additional questions. And I think with this one, we're going to walk through the schedule from top to bottom, and we're going to start with the revenues. And the assumptions are the same as the current state, meaning that as far as enrollment and accepting of property taxes. And so you'll see that enrollment, starting in fiscal year '24 and beyond, does include a 2% annual increase, and that is over fiscal year '23. And fiscal year '23 enrollment is projected to be flat as compared to the fiscal '22 budget. So we have not built in an increase in enrollment to fiscal '23. The next line down you'll see in red is HERF funding, higher education emergency relief funding, federal funds. We are planning to use or projecting to use 10.9 million in one-time HERF funding to offset anticipated lost revenues, and that would be a calculation of fall of '23 enrollment compared to fall of '19 enrollment. And then, beginning in fiscal year '24, you'll also see that there, we are projecting for estimating a tuition increase of $3 per credit hour in fiscal years '24 through '27, and also implementing differential tuition starting in fiscal '24. And we'll talk much more about tuition in the next couple of slides. So before then, we're going to continue down our schedule here and look at expenses. We wanted to ensure that our values are reflected in the budget, and the expenses include the full five years of strategic compensation plan as approved by the governing board last year. There is also an additional $1.8 million increase for marketing and a small increase for the foundation operating costs of $250,000 in fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '23 also includes a 1.5% budget reduction. And what our plan is on that is that we're going to replace that 1.5% reduction to the colleges and district office divisions and replace it by an annual capital allocation. And so as I was talking about earlier, that would be funded by the tax shift, again, provided that it's continued to be supported by the governing board and doesn't hamper our deferred maintenance program. In fiscal years '24 and '25, we also have an additional 1% reduction. We do have a subteam of ABC established to review options on how to implement this reduction across the system. We could have different options available to us, whether they be a 1% reduction across the board, or being able to gather some system-wide efficiencies and use that to fund the budget reduction. I think there's a lot of options available, so that subteam will be critical as we look to the '24 budget. These reductions, as you see in front of you, are a total of 3.5% reductions over three years, and it's actually 4.5% when we add the 1% reduction generally that was taken in fiscal '22. That last line on the expenditure side is shifting $5 million of operational expenses to Prop. 207 funding until Fund I-10 stabilizes, hopefully over the coming years, as you can see. There were some benefits of this option noted by the ABC group. It does hope to achieve a balanced budget around fiscal years '26 and '27, as you can, again, see kind of on that pink line, most of that line is pink. And then it does try to balance financial challenges with a combination of budget reductions and the potential for tuition increases. And it does continue the implementation of the strategic compensation plan. ABC also noted challenges with this option, and a couple of the challenges noted were increasing tuition. And so again, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. And there were concerns that were raised around revenues reflecting a 2% enrollment increase beginning in fiscal year '24. increase beginning in fiscal year '24. On that matter, I think that's a difficult one. I, you know, I look at it that I think that we need to, I don't want to say hope for the best, but we need to aspire to have enrollment increases. And then one of, in a couple of comments, you'll hear me talk about how this five-year projection is simply that and is based on the information we have available today. So as we go through the years, we will continue to refine and adjust as necessary based on as more information comes available to us. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the reasons why we want to present this five-year look. First of all, we wanted to get a better view of our financial position, and we wanted to really illustrate what it would take to get back to a balanced budget. Another underlying idea of this is to prepare our system for budget reductions in future years. It is challenging for us as a system. It's challenging for our colleges. It's challenging for our district office divisions to do, you know, to find out three, four, or five months out that you're going to have a budget reduction in the next year. So we wanted to be able to plan for the reductions that we believe are going to be coming in fiscal year '24 and '25. Again, how exactly they're going to be implemented, we're not sure yet, but we're going to work on trying to come up with that plan earlier rather than later. Again, some of this is about strategy and being able to strategically make those reductions versus, you know, now I have to cut this, but I would have preferred to cut that had I known differently in the, you know, at the time. So again, I also want to reiterate that this five-year look is based on the information we have available to us today, and we want to ensure that the future years have flexibility for a changing environment. As an example, if we do decide to move forward with tuition increases and we get, say, to fiscal year '25 and we determine that we really truly don't need to increase tuition in fiscal year '26, we absolutely won't recommend an increase. We also know that we have, as I talked about a minute ago, that we have concerns about enrollment and whether or not we've found the floor on our enrollment. A couple of other unknowns that we are aware of, and I'm sure many more will surface in the coming years, is that eventually we will have a strategic plan and will need to be in alignment with the budget. We also don't know the true impact of four-year degrees on our budget. And finally, this look doesn't include any new expenses beyond the compensation plan, so we will need to look at efficiencies and savings as a system to gain additional expenditure flexibility into the future. Another example that we have is we don't know what the impact on our finances will be of a more hybrid work environment, if that is the direction, in fact, we end up going. We may have cost efficiencies that we may be able to use to offset any other expenditure reductions, or we may decide or figure out that we actually need larger expenditure reductions. So we want to just make sure that we all understand that the five-year picture is important, but it also needs to be flexible as we go forward. So with that, Elsa, we'll go to the next slide, and we'll finally get to those later slides on tuition that I kept deferring to. So really, my hope was that this presentation would allow us to start a conversation around potentially increasing tuition rates in the coming years. I want to ensure our governing board and our public that we will be compiling additional data and relevant information to inform how we may move that forward. We want to work to try to find that sweet spot where the tuition change helps Maricopa but doesn't decimate our students. And also, we need to determine how tuition does or does not relate to course fees. Basically, we have a lot of work to do ahead of us in this space. We anticipate a work session in early fall and possibly one even this coming June to explore the data as we gather that and also any recommendations we may have. For now, a couple of items I want to share related to tuition. We do have a subteam of ABC working on differential tuition, what a structure might look like for Maricopa. We will, of course, review what other colleges are doing, including Pima Community College, what a recommended implementation plan might look like. For instance, we wouldn't necessarily want to have a huge increase in a single year, but would look to implement that over time. And then for the slide in front of you, as a primer and a kind of a fairly stark view in my mind, on this slide, we looked at tuition as adjusted for inflation. And it's very clear that since we have not really adjusted per-credit-hour tuition in several years, what we're charging has not kept up with inflation, yet our costs to provide classes and to simply operate are impacted by inflation. And if we go to the next slide, Elsa, you'll see a graphical representation of this. And I think it's even more stark as to the difference between what we are charging and what is, what tuition is adjusted for inflation. And so if we go to the next slide, Elsa, we have the next steps presented here. March of '22, possible governing board work session. I'll probably change that to a likely governing board work session. I think what we'll do is we'll update changes for fiscal, or for Fund 110, which is primarily what we just focused on. We will have new construction amounts available to us on February 10. And then we'll also present an update on other funds, which obviously were not included in this presentation. And then I think you all are aware of the more formal process of the budget. In April of '22, you'll have budget documents for first read. And then May of '22, we will have a TNT hearing, again, if we decide to move forward and continue to support the tax shift, and then also the fiscal year '23 budget adoption. And that is the end of my presentation. For all of that information, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you all might have.
Ms. Bernio, thank you very much for the presentation, very thorough and informative. And as always, every time information comes forward, I always learn something new. So thank you for that. I expect that the board members do have questions. And for ease of conversation, if board members in the community don't mind, I am going to do my usual practice of going through board members and allowing them to each ask their questions. If at the end of that cumulative process, we have an opportunity to go back and forth and do that, I'll try to facilitate that as well. But with that, I'm going to start questions and go in my traditional alphabetical order, and that would be, Ms. Nguyen, do you have any questions this afternoon?
Reverse alphabetical.
Yeah, well, I've reversed it. So you go first this time.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for the presentation. I think there's a lot to absorb here, and there's things I want to go back and look at. I'm concerned with our enrollment being down, and I think that's the most immediate problem that I see that needs fixing, that we're talking about tuition increases and cost of living and all that. I think when you don't have students to then raise the price on, I don't know that that's always the best solution, and yet it seems to be the one that you guys are putting forth. The other thing that concerns me about what I just heard is the, I don't think we have all the pieces, and you weren't expected to, this is kind of an overview. So I'd like to get into some of the thinking that's going behind your strategy, Kim. And I don't think you're ready to present that yet, like how we got to some of the conclusions that we're getting to. So I, I think we know that right now with what's happened, we don't have, there's things that are broken that we need to fix. And I'm committed to fixing them, but I'm hopeful that we'll look at a bigger cross-section of solutions before raising tuition is the answer to the problem. That's, I guess it's not really a question, it's just my, you can address it if you want, though. I think that's, that's my major concern in what I just heard.
Duly noted, Mrs. Nguyen. Sorry, Mrs. Sullivan, can I go ahead and respond?
No, I was going to say, I expect you had some comments on that.
Yes, I will do my best. Certainly appreciate the questions and the concerns, Mrs. Nguyen. And I would love to get, I think, a little bit more information in the future about the specific items for conclusions and such like that. I agree on the concern over raising tuition when we have decline in enrollment, but that is part of the work that I think we need to do to show whether or not we have some justification in still considering to increase tuition. So I ask you just to kind of hold on to that until we can get some of the data together that I believe we can to be able to bring back to the board. But that absolutely is a concern that permeates all of us. So this would not be a willy-nilly decision that this is what we're going to do because this is what's easy, because it's quite frankly not easy, and it's not easy for any of us.
But I definitely agree that it's not easy, and I think that's why, I think we've been kind of kicking the can down the road. And the pandemic created a whole other wrinkle for us, Kim. So I appreciate what you guys are looking at, but I think there's going to be, have to have some tough decisions made, whether we cut staffing or there's other things, there's other ways to cut costs. And we keep putting the burden on the taxpayer. And I think that at some point, they're not going to turn to us, and they're already not turning to us as an option. They're going other places, and we're not being competitive in the market. And if we make ourselves uncompetitive, you're not going to get to do your four-year program because you're not going to be relevant in the marketplace. And that's, that's my, that's where my concern is coming from. And I appreciate that we've got some, we've got some numbers are numbers, and we're going to have to look at the reality of where we're at. And I do appreciate the enormous task in which you've been given. So I thank you for the work that you've done so far, and I look forward to our next meeting on this.
Thank you for that.
Mrs. Nguyen, anything else to follow up?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Dr. Thor.
Thank you. I acknowledge that you said you were going to be presenting us with additional data related to tuition. I would like to put in some of my requests for data, which may already be on your list. I'd be interested in what the tuition rates have been at the other nine community college districts over the same period of time. And also, what is the history of tuition increases at the three public universities over the same period of time? I also would be interested in an analysis of the impact of the flat rate that the board approved in 2020, that was capping tuition at 12 units. And to the extent that we can say how much revenue was lost by capping at 12, but also the reverse, do we think students took more credits as a result of that? And then similarly, I'd be interested in an analysis of the board's decision to allow individuals who'd moved into the state in the last 12 months to take their first six credits at the in-state rate rather than the out-of-state rate. So similar questions there, how much revenue do we think that we lost because of that? But similarly, how many more students or credit hours did we, do we think that we gained because of that? I suspect that Dr. Gonzalez felt the hackle rise on my back many times during your presentation when you kept referring to whether or not the board wishes to continue to do the tax shift. And I want to remind you that the board did pass a resolution committing long-term to that, not only for deferred maintenance, but because, in order to avoid having to go for a general obligation bond. So those are basically my requests and my comments.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Thor, and thank you for some of the data points. I did have at least two of those on my list, so we'll add the other two as well. And I appreciate the comments about the tax shift. And I'll just be quite frank and candid that I try to choose my words carefully on how I say things. So I appreciate the reminder that that is something that we do intend to continue to move forward, referring to the tax shift. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Sounds like that was it for you at this moment. So moving on then to Ms. Smith.
Hello, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple clarifying questions. Did you say that you would be following up with more information about how differential tuition would work, such as which students would be affected, which programs? Or are you able to share a little bit about that now?
Mrs. Smith, no, we will need to follow up with more information on that. And we would have a detailed plan on who would be impacted or essentially what courses would be impacted, what recommended rates might be, what an implementation plan might look like. Again, would we implement it over, you know, potentially a three-year time period instead of just a, you know, what goals or what milestones do we have in that? So that is work that is underway right now, and so we don't have that work to share with you just yet.
Okay. And so for the 10.5, or really when you round, 10.6 million in fiscal years '24, '25, where this is indicated, how was that calculated? Or is that almost like a placeholder number based on the other cells in the sheet?
So, Mrs. Smith, that is actually based on looking at Pima Community College District's model and looking at how we might take parts and pieces of it and implement it. So that is, I would call it a placeholder, but it's not based on any other information in the spreadsheet through the schedules. It is basically, we have a stellar employee in budget that went through and looked at Pima's model and then overlaid that on what Maricopa could look at doing. But we don't want to stop there. We want to take a look at it and see if there is something that we should do differently, can do differently for Maricopa. So again, we still have work to do on that.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want to make sure I understand for the tuition increase of $3, that would be that every five, every year, it would go up an additional three? Is that what you're putting here? Or would it just increase that first time and then remain at that higher rate?
No, that proposal or that schedule, I don't want to call it really a proposal. That view is a $3 increase each year for the years that are stated. So it is a total of $12 of increases by the time we get to fiscal '27. And again, that also is why I wanted, I use that example for needing to have the flexibility in the future years, that that could be what our five-year look is. And if we get halfway through that five-year look and something is different, maybe the state decided to fund us with, you know, operational revenues, then we absolutely can decide that we don't want to do that increase in fiscal '27. So it's just an illustration of what it would look like to get us to a, back to a balanced budget.
Got it. And then finally, perhaps you'll be following up with this as well, but for the 2% enrollment projection, were there a couple of assumptions that were made? Or are there other organizations that are starting to use 2% as a, as a number? Can you share more about how that was chosen?
Well, I wish I could, Mrs. Smith. It is, I don't want to say it's a number out of the air. I think historically, when we've looked at our budget projections, it's not unusual for us to use 1% or 2%. The chancellor does have a goal of increasing enrollments by 2%, so I believe that that is where the 2% came from in these particular schedules. But again, it is an item that we have to watch, and we'll have to watch from year to year.
Got it. And if you don't mind, I would like to ask one more question before turning to my colleagues. For the 1% reduction in fiscal years '24, '25, would that, is the current thinking that that would be implemented across all campuses equally? Or are there some other thoughts as to how that would be handled?
So that is why we have a subteam from ABC looking at those reductions in '24 and '25. It could be, it could be a 1% reduction across It could be, it could be a 1% reduction across the board, so to all colleges and district office divisions. It could also be that we want to look at having smaller reductions in one place, larger reductions in another place. So that group is going to look at a lot of data as well, different modeling of how we could implement those 1% reductions. And then ultimately, what I would really like for us to look at is if there are system-wide efficiencies that we could put in place that would allow us to use reduced costs as a result of those efficiencies to take care of these 1% reductions or some portion of it, then we would be able to use that as well and not necessarily have to reduce college and district office division budgets. So that is unfortunately, a little bit up in the air, but again, that's because I want us to be able to look at some different approaches to that and come back with a recommendation on how those would get implemented.
Thank you. Those are my questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Moving on, Dr. Norene.
Thank you. And thanks for ABC and everybody for all the work they put into this. This is, this is great and lots of detail. And thanks for my colleagues for asking some of the questions I had. So a couple of them that I was going to ask is, again, back to Dr. Thor's comment about the capping of the tuition, has that been considered? Like, are we looking at a, a, an upper level, you know, after 12 credits, you know, we're just going to max out the tuition after 12 credits or max it out at 15? Has that been part of the, the discussion?
It, it definitely is an option for us, Dr. Norene. That is another place where we really need to go back and look at, and certainly to, to Dr. Thor's point, you know, what were the impacts financially and enrollment-wise of those two programs that we put into place for '21? I, I don't have the answer to that, those two scenarios. But I think as we come forward with additional information around tuition, there's, I think, a lot of options that are available to us. And if the data pans out that, you know, those in fact were really good for our students, whether it's enrollment or success-related, and we didn't lose so much revenue associated with it, then those should be on the table for consideration as we look forward to tuition. Another suggestion that has come up that needs to be explored is, you know, can we set tuition for a two-year time period and any new students come in, pay the higher tuition rate for their next two years, you know, and so on, and so on, and so on. So in ABC, we had, I think, a very robust discussion when it came to tuition, but we absolutely haven't landed on anything because we really believe that we need to look for appropriate data to help inform those decisions and discussions further. So there's a lot of ideas and thoughts out there, but we need to get some data behind them to explore them so that we can feel comfortable and confident in coming back to the board with a recommendation and one that we can all live with and stand behind. Because as I said earlier, those are, that's not an easy thing to do to, to raise tuition. And we want to make sure we can do it, you know, in as clear a conscience as we can.
Yeah, thank you. Because that was, that was one of my next questions is, yeah, because I know like places like NAU, you lock in at the tuition that you started with and as long as you're, you stay enrolled, they have their rules that you can stay at that tuition rate. So it doesn't, your, that student's tuition doesn't go up each year. It's the, the new students coming in would, would go up. So thanks, thanks for that. And I think, I think you'd mentioned something about marketing too, and I think that's going to be really key because whatever we do, we do, we're going to have to definitely do some, some masterful marketing about, about the decisions that we're making and the tuitions that we're, they're charging and that sort of thing. And again, this is just something out there that I, hopefully to get some more information about, especially as we go to the differential tuition and, and the impact that financial aid is going to have on that. Because as we know that, you know, even though tuition for different programs is, is, can be differentiated and, you know, it's, it's a different cost, financial aid is not, you know, financial aid, they're just going to give a certain amount. So if I, we can get some more information about how, how financial aid will be impacted or how differential tuition will be impacted with financial aid and, and that sort of thing, I think that'll be, be really helpful. And again, back to the, to the marketing piece, you know, and we're going to, we're going to be approving fees later. And I, what I've noticed and I've, I'm very grateful for, as I mentioned the last week, about how the work that the departments have done to incorporate books and incorporate supplies and lower the cost by, by the, the fees, is there some way that we can look at even having tuition cover that so that we, when we market it, we're saying, for example, you know, these classes, you know, your books, you know, you pay this tuition, your books are included or, or that sort of thing because of what the departments have done so well to, to go to eBooks and, and lower the cost of, of textbooks? Is there something we can do about that so that we can, we can market the increase in a way that's, that's transparent, that is, that is benefiting the students and that sort of thing?
Thank you for that. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's, that's okay. I'll just go into the next one.
No, go ahead, please.
And the last one is, do we want to, do we want to start looking or just maybe having a group look at some of our, our programs that are, are not financial aid eligible and see what it would take to make those financially eligible so that we could, we could at least bring in some more revenue that way from, from the federal government from where the students, you know, that these programs that don't qualify for, for financial aid, if we get them to qualify for financial aid, can we increase the, the student, the enrollment in those programs and of course, increase the revenue? And that was all.
Okay, thank you for that. That's a very good question on financially eligible programs, so we will get a look at that. I do want to, so one of the data elements we have relating to tuition is the impact of financial aid or how financial aid interacts with the tuition rate. So thank you for that. We will definitely be pulling data on that as well. And then we will add to our list to look at the possibility of including books in tuition. I think that one might get a little bit more challenging, but it's definitely something that we can take a look at. I think we need to be as innovative as we can be.
Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, I, maybe this is just my opportunity to, to again, look at, at the tuition or the, the fee structure and, and how that, that is going to be impacted by this or how we can incorporate our, our fee policies and our fee structure into, you know, any increase if we, if we, if we go with an increase, if we can incorporate it in, in some way to keep the overall cost down for the students. And, you know, because I think too, too often, we're just looking at tuition as cost and, and when we look at the fees, we can see that, you know, the overall cost for the students is, is, is a lot more. So, you know, maybe, maybe this is our chance to look at, at our fee structure and how we can incorporate it with, with all of this.
Yes, and we definitely have on our list to look at the interaction of tuition and the course fees as well. So we will definitely get a look at that.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Moving on, Mrs. McGrath.
Thank you. I would like a better, clearer picture of where we are. And when the enrollment is reported to us, it is reported to us as down 7% or 9% or whatever as the same time last year. And then when we're given an overall picture, it is the past 10 years. And I would like to have enrollment reported to us from our very high year, 2011, and what it has dropped down to now. Because I have people that have figured out our tuition, our enrollment drop and they tell me it's much greater than what the administration is telling us. So I'd like a clearer picture of that. Another thing, I had a difficult time following the slide or the information given about the four things that were chosen to concentrate on and the top two chosen. In that slide, it didn't say what those top two things were, and I can't recall what they were and I didn't get a printed, printout of this. So anyway, what were those top two things of the four? Please.
Yes, Mrs. McGrath. So really, the only option that you are seeing in this presentation is actually what we called Option Six, because that is the one that we forwarded as our preferred direction for the budget. I, I have not shared, Option Four is not included in this presentation, for instance, because we were trying to use the shared governance approach to get us to this place versus having multiple options available at this stage in the game. So, so what you're seeing on Slide 20, make sure I got the right one, on Slide 20 is, was Option Six as ABC reviewed it. I don't know if that makes sense.
Is what is Option Six? What is, what, what is in that option?
It, it is the slide, it's on Slide 20. That, that multi-year general fund projection recommended option, that is Option Six.
Thank you. Okay. I didn't see, at least in my opinion, enough reduction in spending as a solution. For instance, we spend, from what I can gather, a great deal of money encouraging students, advertising, whatever, getting students to come to the school, but apparently it's been very unsuccessful. And I'm thinking there must be better ways to spend that money or give it a shot and not have any of that spent for a year and see what happens. Because as I understand it, enrollment's down across colleges across the nation and is this a beneficial use of our money to spend money encouraging students to come, doing a sales program when our sales program is completely worthless? So I'm hoping that someone can come up with more suggestions as to reductions in spending. I didn't see enough emphasis on that in this budget presentation. I'd like to see much more of that, along with a much better presentation of what our actual enrollment, enrollment drop is. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mrs. McGrath.
With that then, Ms. Bittersmith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. One of the advantages of going last, which I've now discovered because usually I'm first, is most of my questions have already been asked, which is, which is great. I just would like to just reiterate that Dr. Norene's inquiry about the financial aid impacts, I think, is critically important. And I know the answers will be shared with the full board, but I simply want to add that I too would like to understand how, what impacts those might have. I also share Ms. Nguyen's concern and other board members too about tuition increases. Understanding we have dynamics we have to deal with, but looking, as I, I know you are looking at other models, not only from other community colleges, but potentially other four-year institutions, understanding we're moving that direction, not this coming year, but soon, to four-year degree programs. I'd, I'd like to see what other creative bundling opportunities have, have happened in some of those unique programs, such as Dr. Norene mentioned about including books as part of a tuition package, you know, or whether you actually have a, a tuition rate and then as many, I know four-year institutions use an additional fee for certain programs. I, I don't know the marketing impacts of those, but I'm confident your continued review will, will provide us that information. The final thing I would just, would simply say is, I know this is a, has been a long struggle to look at these opportunities and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. And I do appreciate hearing all the answers to, to the questions that have collectively been asked. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. Ms. Nurene, again, the absolute pleasure of going absolutely last is, again, 90% of my, 99% of my questions have been asked and some I didn't even think of to ask. So that's always great. I do want to reiterate that we're, we have one, we have a primary responsibility and that is to get a budget passed for the next fiscal year. And I appreciate hearing from you that you are going to put together or there's going to be a group think around this whole idea of tuition. And certainly, as all of the board members have made a comment on tuition in one way or the other, there are a lot of pieces to consider in that. So again, what is your timeframe for putting this group together? And I, I realize you did mention some timeframe and you did mention when things would start to come to the board, but can you talk a little bit more definitively about that? Because there seems to be so much that we'll need to get our heads around if this is going to be an issue that we accommodate or not moving forward, both ups and downs on, on that. Can you speak a little bit more to your intention around that, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I will certainly do my best. So the original plan that I had was to be able to bring, have a work session with the board in September and intentionally bring all of the information we have on tuition, both general tuition and then also differential tuition. Any data we have and, and any recommendations we have around where we think we might go into the future. I do think that it would be wise for us to consider having a work session in June after, so it's after the, the '23 budget has been adopted, hopefully. And then we would be able to turn our attention and have that work session in June to kind of show what progress we've made to date, where we might be on recommendations, what data elements we've pulled. Because then that would give us a little bit more information from all of you as to if we're heading in the right direction, if there's things that are missing that we would be able to work on over the summer and then hopefully round out the presentation or the suggestions and proposals at September's meeting. Ultimately, what I think would be the best is if in fact, we do land on agreement that we want to do differential tuition, that we want to make any tuition adjustments, we could even bring an item to the governing board for fiscal '24, you know, even as soon as October of this year, which would allow for us to make sure we have changes ready in SIS, would allow for us to market and inform our students sooner rather than later. Our habit has been to make sure that any adjustments for the next year are done by February of that same calendar year. So we wouldn't want to make any changes later than February of '23 to impact the '23, '24 year. But if we're going to make changes to tuition, both structurally and, and dollar amount-wise, I would love for us to be able to do that sooner rather than later so that we can get us and our students better prepared for that. So that's kind of what my thinking is right now, but obviously, some of that is going to depend on how everything comes together and how well we can get everything put together.
Thank you. No, it, it certainly does. And I know this board is very interested in, in doing a lot of work this year. And I think the sooner, though I know it's a burden at some level, you know, we can begin to, to have these conversations that will impact us next year, it's equally important as we're contemplating our position for this year. A couple of things, you know, the issue of enrollment and I appreciate the goal of 2% and certainly that is a chancellor goal. The trending information is, is indicating something different. And as we are moving forward in budget preparations, I think, again, we need to be extremely cognizant that the days of 2011 may be eluding us for the time being, unfortunately. Which then brings us to efficiencies and reductions. I appreciated your comment that we are looking at a three and a half reduction over three years, but I also appreciated the comment around efficiencies, looking at the concepts of hybrid work, what will that, work environments, what will that do to efficiencies, the system-wide pieces and other flexibilities. So as we're approaching both the end of this year and again, anticipating future years, what is the work that, again, you are imagining with, or planning with ABC to address those concerns as we look at those reductions or those issues rather than concerns, I might say?
Mrs. Sullivan, I, I don't have a good answer for that question. I'll just be honest and upfront. I, I think that there is work that can be done at some of the council levels, for instance. I think that I work with the administrative vice presidents all the time and I think that there is potentially some work that they can do to look at where we might gain some efficiencies. I, I think that there are different conversations that can be held at multiple levels within Maricopa. And one of the things that we will be doing that I actually didn't talk about is in the next the next three weeks, I will be visiting each of the colleges and the various employees of the colleges and talking through this very similar budget presentation. And one of the discussion items or one of the themes of those sessions will be about, you know, where are, you know, where are the efficiencies that we think we can gain to really start those conversations and really encourage us as a system to look at where we might be able to get those. I can't sit in my office and say, these are all the things we can do more efficiently. We all need to do this as a system. And again, I'll reference Mrs. McGrath's song choice of Side by Side. We are all in this together, so we need to work together to figure out where we can find those efficiencies and figure out how we can move forward with those. So unfortunately, I don't have a great answer. That is the answer I have, but hopefully we'll have more information as we go forward.
Well, thank you. No, any answer is a good answer in many ways. So I think that calling attention to that is important as we unravel this budget. We certainly need money and capacity to move, keep us moving forward. And I want to also say thank you to the ABC group for their contributions to this and the time and effort that they put into creating this beginning actual budget conversation with numbers in front of us. So thank you. I don't have too many other questions. I did want to do a shout out. I see in your budget, there's also a comment about some monies to the foundation effort. And I believe that this district is beginning to embrace the model of philanthropy as a significant contributor to our bottom line. It does have some tension around it because you never know sometimes what's going to happen. But I want to acknowledge that that is an important growing element to all of our work as we look at all funding opportunities for this district. So I wanted to acknowledge that that I appreciate that. And my last comment would be the efforts that all need to be aligned. I mean, you mentioned alignment with strategic planning. Well, that also means alignment with legislative activities. So we're doing our best efforts to ensure we have good partners in that sector as well to embrace positive budget positioning for us. So I guess this goes to you, Kim, and then also to Dr. Gonzalez and just listening to what the board had to say. These are really system issues with so many parts, and we're looking at one box right now, which is the budget, but there's so many elements that are driven into this. So I really appreciate everyone's work. I just think we need to keep it top of mind that if we're going to get to fiscal year '26 without falling off a cliff, we really have an imperative to be invested in the side-by-side model so that maybe we don't have a barrel of money, but we can figure out ways to be efficient and excellent within within that. So I guess I'm rattling on and on here. So board members, I really do appreciate your questions. Do you have any final comments from Ms. Grineau as she goes forward with her team and the ABC group and Dr. Gonzalez and all of the administrative staff to hone this budget a little bit more so that when we get to the next presentation for fiscal year '23, we are comfortable with what we are beginning to see? Is there any other specific direction for her? Any board member to offer a comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
When Dr. Yakin or not Dr. Minister Yacinto was rapidly let go, this was all dumped into Ms. Grineau's lap, and I really appreciate her efforts, her work, her dedication, and her ability to do this. I want to tell her thank you. This is this was an unexpected huge challenge for her, and she's doing a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. So Ms. Grineau, run with that.
Well, thank you, Mrs. McGrath. I'm doing the best job that I can, and I have tons and tons of outpouring of support, which I greatly appreciate. So that is how we are able to get to the place that we are. And Maricopa is full of great people, so we're definitely leveraging all of those different aspects. And and I do appreciate the support of the governing board too as we go forward.
Thank you. Board members, any very last comments? Being done, Dr. Gonzalez, before I conclude, do you have any comments?
I want to thank, excuse me, President Sullivan, I want to thank the governing board members for their valuable feedback and their good questions. And we certainly hold these very close to us with the highest priorities and importance in how we're going to continue to move forward with this. So already, I'm looking forward to working with my leadership team. And I too want to thank Kim for the excellent work that she's done in leading this effort, our tri-chairs of ABC, and all of the faculty, staff, and administration that have been a part of this process. It's been quite different this year, and we've all come to this point together and largely supportive of what you see. And that's really different from previous experiences here. So I want to congratulate the entire team and just express my appreciation. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And again, thank you, Ms. Grineau. So with that, board members, we have 28 minutes before the formal board member meeting starts. So I'm going to stay on your connection. This is it. But we will adjourn this meeting and regroup in 28 minutes. So see you soon. Thank you for hear you soon. Thank you, everyone. So with that, I'm going to remind everyone that we're live captioning our meeting. So to view the captions, click on the link in our chat window. And with that, at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for January 25, 2022. For the record, I will call a roll call vote of board members, and I'll start with you, Ms. Bittersmith. I'll come back just in case. Ms. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Wynn?
Present.
Ms. Bittersmith? Mr. Evans? I'm going to call the meeting to order with six board members present, one probably pending, and tried to connect, and our student trustee unavailable at this time. So with that, also, when Ms. Bittersmith signs on, would you just make a note for the record if she's present and let me know, please?
Yes, will do.
Thank you. We do have a substitution for this evening, and that is Dr. Patricia Cardina-Sadame, Vice President of Student Affairs for Astoria Mountain Community College, is sitting in for Dr. Ray Rivera, who's president. With that, then, we move to our, yes?
President Sullivan?
Yes.
I've been on, but I just now could hear that I got hooked in. So I am here and have been here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem. With that, we have a seven oh board member attendance at this evening's meeting with our student advisor trustee unable to attend this evening. We have gone through substitutions, and we're now to our item three on the agenda, the Faculty Executive Council Report. That will be a verbal report by Dr. Sasha Regis. And you have a title, "Saving the Past: The South Phoenix Oral History Project." So welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In 2017, Dr. Summer Sherland was teaching a history seminar at South Mountain Community College. Dr. Sherland challenged this intimate group of 12 students by assigning a class research project. The students could choose any topic to study, so long as the whole class agreed, and it related to Arizona history. Since they all grew up in the area, the students chose to explore their own community by studying the history of South Phoenix. For the next two weeks, the class combed every information warehouse they could find, from the local library to the state archives, and they found nothing in the way of scholarly work on South Phoenix's history. With disappointment, Dr. Sherland suggested the class pick a new topic. To her surprise, the students rejected her suggestion. They argued that if nobody else had researched their community, their roots, then it was their job to do it. The students asked Dr. Sherland, if not us, then who? If not us, then who? That question took Dr. Sherland and her students on a journey that ended up launching the South Phoenix Oral History Project, a student-led initiative to capture and preserve the history of South Phoenix. Since then, over 200 students have contributed to the project in one way or another. They created an archive storing over 50 years of historical materials, which they're working to index. They collected over 300 hours of recorded interviews about South Phoenix and its history. They produced a video documentary detailing the efforts of the South Phoenix community that ultimately led to the creation of SMCC. They designed a historic walking tour of the campus and a historic driving tour of the area. They even wrote the first ever academic article about South Phoenix, forthcoming in the March edition of the Journal of Arizona History. From the very beginning, the students decided that the project would be student-driven and community-oriented, since most of South Mountain students have a deep connection to the area and typically remain local long after graduation. That sense of connectivity led them to establish the project as a shared authority, with the community itself holding the responsibility for its authorship and also reaping the benefits as its audience. In that spirit, they chose to house the archives at the SMCC Community Library, itself a cooperative endeavor co-owned by SMCC and the City of Phoenix. In return, the community has embraced the project with enthusiastic support from the City of Phoenix Library, the Arizona State Archives, the Arizona Historical Society, and grants from local and regional organizations. While the fellowships and stipends that the students can receive for participating do help to compensate for the significant time commitment that the project requires of them, ultimately, their efforts are a labor of love. Most of the student participants joined the project from the SMCC History Program after learning about it in classes like Arizona History, Mexican-American History and Culture, American History since 1865, or African-American History since 1877. However, when the students decided they wanted to take the project into the digital realm, the STEM Scholar Program joined the cause, providing a handful of students with no connection to the history program but with experience in web and graphic design. In the end, the project celebrates every student contribution. They get complete credit for their work. All of the websites have student citations acknowledging their efforts, and the student researchers are cited as the authors of the academic paper. Knowing that they're creating something valuable to their community and knowing that their names will forever be attached to the product of their labor, the students rise to the occasion, as they must, because when it comes to this project, slackers need not apply. Despite being freshman or sophomore level academically, the student participants are doing graduate-level research. The students crave feedback and produce multiple drafts, never settling for anything less than professional-level output. It's no wonder that the project has won multiple awards for innovation and excellence. Now, even setting aside the external support and accolades, the participating students recognize the value of the project for themselves and for the community that they love. As our society scrambles to find ways to overcome the separations imposed on us by the pandemic, it's more important than ever to make meaningful connections with each other. The South Phoenix Oral History Project achieves that ambitious goal, connecting the students to each other, to the college, to the community, and to their past. Every semester, the students participating in the project write their own reflections, and these burst with enthusiasm and positivity for the program and its supporting faculty, Liz Warren and Dr. Travis Travis May from the Storytelling Institute and Dr. Summer Sherland from the History Department. One faculty participant summarized the project's impact by saying that "The South Phoenix Oral History Project has given South Mountain Community College a sense of place, a bit closer to home," one student put it plainly. "Until now, I had no idea that South Phoenix even mattered." Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much for for that report. Moving on, we have this evening, the adjunct faculty report. Ms. or Dr. Train has submitted a written report. However, she has asked to deliver that verbally to us as well this evening. So with that, Dr. Train?
Thank you very much, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, and invited guests. I'll take just a few minutes this evening. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to bring the following details to your attention on behalf of the district's Adjunct Faculty Association Employee Group. Just a clarification, the AFA Employee Group represents adjunct faculty whose solo assignment is part-time faculty work. We want to thank you for the opportunities provided for adjunct faculty to teach in all academic disciplines throughout the district. According to the district dashboard data, during the fall of 2021, 49.3% of all classes were taught by adjunct faculty. Looking back to 2018, 54% of all classes were taught by adjunct faculty. In partnership with our district administration, we await the details, of course, for spring 2022, in terms of total assigned classes, again, for adjunct faculty. This evening, we want to focus on just one topic very briefly, and that is found for you in the approved faculty handbook document that was presented to you and approved by you in February of '21. There are two articles in that particular document that reflect the adjunct faculty tier compensation structure, and it is described with a launch date of July 1 of '22. Originally, that launch date could have been July 1 of '21. However, we're asking this evening that you consider, among all of the work that lies ahead, that the July 1, '22 date be honored for the launch process and that all adjunct faculty serving in the singular part-time faculty role be included in the professional development and compensation structure. In support of the efforts to enroll more students district-wide, as well as to retain our students through graduation and certificate accomplishment, our Adjunct Faculty Association supports that that tier structure as a tool for all adjunct faculty. We believe the tool will not only attract the highest-performing adjunct faculty to our district, but will also continue the economic support for advanced professional skills development and professional industry credentialing that will assist in the marketing of Maricopa as a highly competitive partner in the higher education marketplace. District adjunct faculty represent professional fields such as medicine and dentistry, private industry executives, key technology industries, advanced research fields, social science specialties, legal studies, justice studies, entrepreneurial and fine arts, just to name a few. In so doing, they bring mentorship, coaching, career advising, student and graduate employment opportunities, strategic contributions about the four-year degree options that lie ahead, as well as abilities to assist in the curricular design and delivery of new and new certificate and degree programs. The enhanced contributions will be effectively recognized through a financial tier structure that includes our current and future part-time faculty serving in adjunct roles in our district. Ideally, tier structures recognize years of continuous professional service and advanced instructional and advanced instructional and curricular design skills. A tier structure will provide not only the economic framework for sustained retention of faculty professionals, but it will further develop the scope of professional development activities. Today's higher education marketplace in Arizona and throughout the U.S. is highly competitive. Adjunct faculty have the most advantageous window of opportunity to determine where they wish to dedicate their professional skills than has ever existed before. Tier structures exist currently in our higher education competitive partner systems. So in alignment with the district's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion through the work of our Center for Excellence Committee, again, we believe that all part-time adjunct faculty should be afforded various levels of involvement in a tier structure that allows for their level of professional contribution, whether that be as a new instructional colleague for Maricopa or for those of us with multiple decades of teaching and curricular experience. We recognize that during the current budget review season and in the future, decisions will be made that impact the resource administration for the district and its colleges on a long-term basis. We do believe that the tier investment, the tier structure investment, will produce both short and long-term outcomes that directly impact every student that we serve. Therefore, again, we're requesting that July one of twenty-two be honored for the launch process and that all of our part-time adjunct faculty be included in this professional development structure. It is an honor to serve our students. Adjunct faculty are committed to the success of the district, its colleges, and our overall community. We appreciate the opportunity for an ongoing collaboration with district administration, our residential faculty colleagues, and all staff members through our shared governance structure. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Train. Uh, with that, I'm going to move on to the employee representation update, uh, Ms. Chandler and Ms. Mangy. Please go forward.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. My name is Shannon Monge, and I am before you today as the co-president for employee representation, along with my colleague, Anna Chandler. Next slide, please. As we do with every board meeting, we would like to offer some recognition to those that have been working so hard since our last meeting. One shout-out we would like to give is thank you to the governing board and Chancellor Gonzalez for that added day of rest and time to spend with our family and loved ones during the winter break. It was a well-deserved and much-needed rest for all of us. As we know, COVID numbers are beginning to rise with the new variant and other things happening. So what we would like to do is to emphasize the chancellor's last email on January twenty-fourth to offer flexibility for those who might be feeling ill, whether it is COVID or other things that might be out there. And so what we would like to do is thank those leaders for being flexible with return-to-work plans and ensuring that all employees and students remain safe. There are many policies and leave options available. I ask all those administration, district leadership, supervisors, part-time and full-time employees to reach out to their COVID liaisons, their HR, or their campus or district reps if they have any questions regarding these. We would like to thank district HR for hitting the ground running back, coming back into twenty twenty-two as we look forward to continued movit- movement in the Strategic Compensation Plan and other initiatives. They have many town halls happening this month around various important topics, and we can't be any more grateful for the hard work that they are doing. We would also like to give a shout-out and congratulations to President Sullivan and Dr. Norene on their reelections with their positions with this board, and we look forward to continued collaboration with them as well as all board members. Next slide, please. A quick shout-out to those graduates who walked dur- or through a drive-through in the winter of twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one. So many campuses held a winter graduation, although they might have been small. I participated in the one at PVCC, and it was so moving to see the graduates come through the smiles on their faces and their families' faces and just be with our staff and students and faculty to support the graduates. We hope they all come back to their campuses as alumni in the future. Next slide, please. Although this is hard to say, I would like to give a shout-out to President Haynes and a congratulations on her much-deserved retirement. It has been a pleasure to work with her in this role through CEC and employee representation. I hate to see her go, but she absolutely deserves it, and I know others will say kudos to that as well. So as you see on the screen, if you would like to give her a celebr- celebratory goodbye, that's her party invitation right there on the screen. We hope to see all of you there in a safe manner to wish her happy trails on her retirement. Congratulations, President Haynes. Next slide, please. So some updates from Anna and me, the co-presidents, as we have committed to every three months, we have met with the chancellor's cabinet and the president's council for a check-in on the progress of employee representation. We got some extremely meaningful feedback from both groups, and we will continue to implement the positive changes to move employee representation forward. I had the privilege of attending the governing board retreat reception this month, and I want to say thank you to all of those who opened the door to allow us to attend and collaborate and build that relationship for not only Anna and myself, but for future folks in this role. It was wonderful to talk and meet to everybody in such a safe and welcoming manner. We are continuing to move forward with the Strategic Plan for Employee Representation. That plan was an idea that was shared amongst the representatives, and we were also reached out to by Brian Spicker of the Foundation. And thank you to Brian for championing this mission for us and being there as a collaborator and offering to assist us in any way that we can. Um, it's gonna be a really good step for employee representation. I do believe that COVID really set some things back, but employee representation is ready to move forward to do good, not only for staff, but for students. Next slide, please. This month, we would like to highlight the representatives of Paradise Valley Community College. Go Pumas. Next slide, please. You will see before you the non-exempt council reps for PVCC. We have Laura Mizachi, Lance Miller, and Alejandra Marietta. Their profiles before you, I will not read them verbatim, but they are in our employee newsletter that went out at the beginning of the month. Next slide, please. Before you are the PVCC exempt council employee representatives, Mario Marquez, Adriano Moreno, and Josh Moss. Josh also serves as vice president for all of employee representation. Next slide, please. You will see myself. I do work in my day job as administrative assistant senior at PV. I am the co-president for the non-exempt council, and you will also see the name of our sworn officer council member, Greg Mesa. Again, their profiles are in our newsletter. Please read up on those. They have been doing some wonderful work. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Anna Chandler.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, all. I will continue with our policy team updates. We want to first thank this committee as they've been working hard to ensure that the implementation of changes for the policies listed have continued to move forward and are now close to being submitted for continued review. We are also excited to announce that our staff policy collaboration team has started to meet and are is going over these policies um with other collaborators as well at this time. Next slide, please. For the continued request of the governing board, we will continue with the remote policy data. Employee representation has continued to try and encourage employees to apply for the remote work policy that has been approved. Implementation plans vary, though, per campus and district office. Most have stated that they are not implementing this policy until the pandemic is over. At this time, the data is as follows, though. Two hundred and eighty-five remote and virtual work forms have been submitted. Two hundred and seventy-five remote and virtual work agreement forms have also been submitted. Um, one remote and virtual work appeal form has been submitted. Nine have also been for work recruitment forms. Only two of the two hundred and seventy-five requests have been processed and completed. Next slide, please. For our DEI work, here are the spring events that will be occurring during the spring twenty twenty-two semester. And we would like to acknowledge and congratulate Dr. or President Haynes oh, as she was awarded the twenty twenty-two diversity champion by the Scottsdale Nonprofit Community Celebrating Diversity at the Twenty-Eighth Annual Martin Luther King Junior Community Celebration Dinner. Congratulations, President Haynes. As we continue into, oh, and sorry, next slide, please. As we continue into the spring twenty-two semester, we recognize that COVID has continued to be a challenge for all employees of Maricopa. We are so thankful for all the hard work that staff and faculty continue to do to serve our students and community. We understand the challenges that may many are facing at this time and appreciate your continued resiliency and presence at this time. We'd also like to read a special thank you to Dr. Georgetta Kelly. Dr. Kelly, employee representation would like to take the opportunity to thank you for all your hard work and dedication in supporting and moving the needle forward to for the employees of Maricopa. You have been a critical support for employee representation and a positive soundboard as we try to move staff representation forward. Your kindness, advocacy, and compassion for staff and all employees indeed shows through the goals and priorities you have set since being with Maricopa. We appreciate how you take the time to listen and understand the needs of employees and the importance of both their professional and personal needs to be successful in their roles. We look to ensure, you look to ensure equality and help to foster and champion shared governance. These leadership skills have enabled us to be involved in challenging conversations and provide a voice for employees with confidence and clarity. Thank you for always ensuring we have a transparent understanding of HR goals and finding ways to communicate efficiently to all employee representatives that then trickles down to the whole system. You have helped build us into better leaders, and we are grateful to you for that. We appreciate the precedent you have set of all of us working together and for the betterment of all. Working with your leadership teams has allowed us to understand the work that's being done and continue to have open dialogue. This has helped to make employee representation a more decisive and informative leading body in our system and be accountable to the work and goal set forth to support employees. Dr. Kelly, your leadership has been extremely critical to the success of employee representation, and we cannot thank you enough for all the hard work you are doing for Maricopa. We look forward to the continued successes and positive relationships we will build at the district and local campus levels of HR. We genuinely appreciate you, and thank you so much for all you do. Thank you so much.
And with that, thank you very much for your report this evening, as always. And uh with that, I'm going to move on to the student life reports. Today, uh, tonight, we have a presentation from Chandler Gilbert Community College. Like to welcome Arad Eratei by Theta Kappa chapter president. So we're looking forward to hearing your report this evening. Please go ahead.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, member of the CEC, and guests. Next slide, please. Good evening. My name is Arad Arusti, and I'm a student at Chandler Gilbert Community College, who is a peer mentor, PTK chapter president, and an All Arizona Academic Team Scholarship recipient. This is my second year at CGCC, and I will graduate this spring with an associate's degree in biological sciences. I'm also a pre-med student. I've been able to participate in in-person classes, events, and extracurricular activities during the current academic year. Next slide, please. My journey at CGCC has enabled me to follow and work towards my career goal, which is to become a primary care physician and practice in underserved communities around Arizona. My experience at Chandler Gilbert Community College has influenced my decision to aim for such a career and has given me the opportunity to prepare myself. These experiences built the person I am today and have built the foundation needed for me to follow my career goal. Next slide, please. My journey at CGCC started in the fall of twenty twenty amid the COVID nineteen pandemic. My involvement in CGCC started right away as I was part of the CGCC Honors Program. Through that, I was able to attend a few extracurricular activities and events which set me up for my current level of involvement and achievement at CGCC. I soon learned about Coyote Leadership Academy, which taught me the leadership skills and what makes a great leader great. CLA built up the path for me to become CGCC's PTK chapter president. Through this position, I've been able to plan out how we can increase our student involvement, which was highly impacted by the pandemic, and we were able to provide support to students who have been affected by the pandemic financially. My chapter advisors and I were able to create a scholarship program within our chapter to support fifteen students' PTK membership fees. And this happened through our chapter funding, and many of our students took advantage of this opportunity. Next slide, please. I became a CGCC PR mentor in the fall of twenty twenty. This experience has allowed me to work with first-year students and make their experience better. As a team, we have been reflecting on our experience as CGC students and how we can improve those experiences for the incoming students. Mr. Ryan King, Director of Student Success, has been very supportive, and we have been able to make a difference in our student experience. I'm an All Arizona Academic Team Scholarship recipient. I was introduced to this scholarship through a CGCC's social media post, and I attended the workshop which gave me the opportunity to learn what this scholarship was all about. Next slide, please. CGCC offers various ways for students to get involved with their community, and one way is through service. I've been involved with the CGCC produce distribution, and through this experience, I have seen the community's need as well as working toward towards answering that need. I've been involved with the CGCC Community Program and continue to volunteer through this program. We have helped different community partners, and one that's most memorable for me was our involvement with the Resurrection Street Ministry. We helped with preparing food for volunteers who help the homeless population, and through this service, we were able to make a greater impact by helping those who help others. These service experiences have opened my eyes in regards to the lack of support for our s- on for our underserved communities, and this has inspired me to set my goal to practice and and serve the underserved communities as I become a medical doctor. Next slide, please. My journey at CGCC included leadership and service, but it also contained academic success. I've been able to get involved with academic projects on campus and to become a research assistant for Dr. Alyssa Richardson's Physics One Eleven class. We are working with APS and their steam turbine generators to use to generate electricity. We use the concepts learned in the classroom to compare different energy sources. Also, I'm currently working on an undergraduate research project with Dr. Karen Vellner at CGCC. Our focus will be on different microbiology concepts, and we want the findings to be useful for others. I intend to make educational, I intend to make educational videos about how to set up Winograski columns, how to do weekly observations and sampling, and graphically displaying results. The videos will be sorted and intended for students and instructors alike who have not set up a long-term project with soil ecology. These opportunities will and have given me the opportunity to become more involved and experienced so I can become a better medical doctor. Next slide, please. Thank you for letting me share my experience and journey as a CGCC student, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and congratulations on all your successes and best regards for your future. Uh, we do need well-educated doctors, so um, thank you for your interest in them, and good luck. Moving forward, then, uh, there are no emeritus awards and recognitions for this evening, so I'm going to move straight to you, Dr. Gonzalez, for your report.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, CEC, and guests that are with us this evening. Um, I want to wish everybody again a Happy New Year as we have, you know, started our spring semester, and it's well underway at this point. I also want to publicly congratulate Mrs. Sullivan and Dr. Norene for their reelection to positions of board chair and secretary, respectively. I'm gonna provide a few updates in different areas, and the first will be a legislative update. Um, the legislative session kicked off from January- The legislative session kicked off from January tenth. The governor gave his final state of state address on the opening day of the session, and there was a huge emphasis on work and workforce development, recognizing community colleges as the key partners in this work. And at the conclusion of the first week of the session, the governor also published published his fiscal year twenty twenty-three executive budget. Included in his budget was ongoing STEM formula funding for Maricopa, which equates to eight point six million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. This was a priority in the board's legislative priorities last fall. And additionally, the budget included thirty million dollars for manufacturing workforce development through community colleges across the state of Arizona. This is also a welcome investment in community colleges to support our efforts in developing the high-demand manufacturing workforce. To date, over one thousand bills, memorials, and resolutions have been introduced, and our government relations director is closely reviewing and monitoring this legislative activity. At the recommendation of our board Public Affairs Committee, we have started to attach the weekly legislative updates as a standalone document in the weekly snapshot. The snapshot includes the latest information you should need on legislation that we are tracking. And you are also aware that the board established the Public Affairs Committee chaired by um, Board Member Bittersmith, who meets biweekly throughout the legislative session to solidify the board's position on legislation based on the legislative priorities adopted this past fall. There's a wide array of legislation to impact in our district that has been introduced thus far. To note a few bills that we are closely monitoring, House Bill twenty thirty-four would grant our career and technical education districts the authority to offer associate degrees in this state. We are currently neutral on this legislation and working with a sponsor on a potential amendment to address our concerns. House Bill twenty-four forty-seven and Senate Bill eleven twenty-three would allow concealed weapon permit holders to have a firearm on a university or a community college campus. Maricopa, along with every other public post-secondary institution in this state, has signed in opposition. Lastly, Senate Bill thirteen seventy-four on expenditure limitation was dropped yesterday by Senator Sho. And essentially, this would change the FTSE definition from uh, fifteen credits to twelve credits, which would place this in line with the federal definition of a full-time student equivalent. I would like to quickly note something on the federal side. Maricopa Community Colleges has been actively working with the city of Phoenix on developing partnerships and programs to reskill the workforce, utilizing federal stimulus dollars that the city received. In a speech given to the mayors at a national conference this past Friday, President Joe Biden gave Phoenix a shout-out for their great work we are doing to support the semiconductor workforce development at our local community college. This praise was in reference to our programs here at Maricopa. I'm incredibly proud of the work that is being done to develop credential programs to meet the needs of the semiconductor industry in Arizona, and it was nice to receive this praise from the president himself. That concludes my legislative update. Earlier, we had discussions on enrollment and I and you I provide these updates weekly to our board in the snapshot, and right now for the spring twenty twenty-two headcount in comparison to the spring twenty twenty-one uh, semester, we are down approximately five point seven percent. Our spring twenty twenty-two FTSE uh, when compared to spring twenty twenty-one is down uh, negative or is down ten point seven percent across the system. As the days continue to 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 occur between now and the forty-fifth day, we will likely see some changes uh, in these numbers, and I will continue to report these to you. I'd also like to share some interesting data that we discussed today um, in our Chancellor's Executive Council meeting, namely around the enrollment demographic trends that we're seeing. We've we find these to be interesting, and while they're interesting, they could possibly be opportunities for us when we look to market and and encourage more students to come to Maricopa. For example, female students across Maricopa are down eight percent or thirty-eight hundred altogether. Full-time students are down fifteen percent or thirty-eight hundred altogether, and students ages twenty-five to forty-nine are also down fifteen percent. So that says something about the the uh, the the lack of students in our system, who they are and how many credits are taken now. Well, we might see a a an increase in in the number of students who have uh, moved from the the first point where you make contact to matriculation. These students are coming in and taking fewer credit hours. The part-time student is becoming more and more our predominant student across our system. As I think about twenty twenty-two and I and 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 what lies ahead for us, I I can't help but think of the construction road sign that says roadwork ahead. And I think that's the road sign for Maricopa because there's quite a bit of work ahead of us. My observations from the recent governing board retreat is that the board takes its role in policy um, very seriously in the development and review of its policy. I'll be working closely with the board and specifically Board Member Jacqueline Smith to schedule work sessions this semester to review and examine current policies and to identify any existing gaps for the board to take under consideration. The roadwork ahead sign also includes an opportunity to engage in budget discussions, strategic planning, review of the board monitoring report, and shared governance as recommended by a task force who is working on this body of work. We also have a number of searches that are taking place at the executive level. This morning, I informed you of the uh, four finalists that have been identified for Scottsdale Community College. Uh, we've got a solid group there, and we are on a timeline that we projected. There will be an opportunity for all to participate in forums uh, next week as the email indicated. So all have been notified that we've got four finalists for Scottsdale. The other president's searches are at their various stages uh, according to the predetermined schedule that we've used, and our plan is to continue along those lines and have those positions filled before the end of the semester or by the end of the fiscal year, as long as everything goes well. Here in the in the within the next couple of weeks, we will officially launch the search searches for um, our executive vice chancellor and provost for the system and also for our general counsel, so I will be providing those upstate updates to you as well as we progress on those searches. I'm looking forward to our our hard work that lies ahead and the many challenges that are presented uh, before us. I look forward to engaging with you as a board, and I look forward to engaging with my administrative team, our faculty across our system, and our dedicated staff across our system that come each and every day to work in their various capacities and give their hundred percent to this effort. That concludes my remarks, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. We look forward to our continued work collaborative work with you as well. And um, I think we all underscore there's a lot that we have planned to do this year, and I sure will all will get most of it done, if not all of it. So that's a great start. So thank you and appreciate the updates. As we move further on our agenda, this is time usually for a citizens interim. There is no one who has made a request to speak with us this evening, which now moves us to consideration for the consent agenda items. All items under this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. So do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? There being no movement along that line, then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No move. This is Mrs. Wang.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Okay, I think Dr. Norene got in there first, so we have a motion that's uh, to approve the consent agenda made by Mrs. Wang, seconded by Dr. Norene. So with that, all board members in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? There being no opposition, uh, by a vote of seven to zero, the consent agenda is approved. We have no non-consent action items for this evening, and uh, there is no while the first reading information item presented this evening, employment and separation November sixth twenty-one through December twenty-four twenty-one. Any comments or questions from board members? Being none, as we move to the monitoring reports, uh, there's two. There's the general unrestricted fund for five months ending eleven thirty twenty twenty-one and six months ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one as a budget analysis report funds. Does anyone have any comments or questions on those? Being none, let's move to our community governing board reports. With that, Ms. Bittersmith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. Uh, just a couple of items. First of all, I was honored to join members of the uh, our community colleges, including Dr. Gonzalez at the State Chamber's Legislative Preview Event Luncheon where the governor and others spoke. Um, and that set the tone for what the report that you heard from Dr. Gonzalez about the number of bills that will be the Public Affairs Committee will be looking at and working with staff on as it moves through the session. Um, I do want to thank uh, Dr. Gonzalez, you and your team for pulling that report out with valuable information. It's just a little easier for the full board to see and and track, and I think that's extremely helpful. We will also have a a number of legislators touring um, the Makers Bay Forge uh, location next week as part of a legislative outreach event. I want to thank the foundation for their help and assistance in that. Um, and hopefully that schedule will hold, and we'll get people that will make the little bit of a trek from the Capitol to to the forge. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Ms. Bittersmith, as we look for towards the next year, you are remaining as our pack chair for which we say thank you. That's our Public Affairs Committee, and also will be representing our board uh, on the foundation, being one of the two board members who officially do that. So thank you for that. Uh, moving on then, Ms. McGrath, do you have anything to report this evening?
No, I do not.
Thank you, and uh, you are now our designated song leader as well as I know your work in uh, budget attention, and as always, you continue to support the foundation. So thank you very much for your leadership in this coming year. Dr. Norene.
I'm very pleased to add that to my resume. Thank you.
Song leader. Yeah, great. Well, I'm relying on you every work session now. Um, so with that, Dr. Norene.
Hey, thank you. Uh, yeah, no, no big report. Just want to thank uh, Elsa again for all her work on on putting together the retreat. I I enjoyed the the social on Friday, and I think we got a lot of good work done. So with that, I just want to wish everybody a great uh, start of the the year and a great spring semester. Thanks.
Thank you, and you're going to be continuing your work not only as board secretary, but on representing us to the foundation along with Ms. Bittersmith, and I know you stay focused on all of our student success activities, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I also want to thank Elsa for her support with the retreat, and I want to echo what Chancellor Gonzalez mentioned about how um, there's much policy work on the policy committee to do um, in the months ahead. And so um, I'll uh, be working uh, with the chancellor and also our general counsel to determine the meeting cadence, both for board members and also for the policy committee to be interacting with staff who have suggested policy changes for us to review. And so I hope in subsequent meetings to provide more detail and looking forward to working with everyone. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the work you're going to do as chair of the policy committee. You're going to be very busy this year. Uh, Dr. Thor.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Uh, I want to thank the American Association of University Women Northwest Valley Branch uh, for inviting me to present on challenges and opportunities facing the Maricopa Community Colleges. The event was held on January eleventh at Rio Salado College's Surprise Center and was co-sponsored by Rise Learning for Life. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and we have you busy, too. You're going to be serving on the uh, Public Affairs Committee. And uh, as we've talked about before, leading the Chancellor Evaluation and Search Committee, and then also representing us on the O G C uh, Search Committee. Uh, so thank you very much for for your future work with us. Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. So January is National Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and I want to thank Rio Salado for letting me um, contribute to their uh, event last Friday. It was wonderful. Uh, talked to students and others and and asked some amazing questions. And uh, I always enjoy the opportunity to to do the nonprofit work I do and combine it with the college. Um, I'm going to be uh, doing the same at the University of Central Florida on Thursday. And um, and I just appreciate being able to uh, represent Maricopa Community College with other college systems around the country. So um, that concludes my report, and thank you uh, for all the work that the chancellor and the board and um, that the college is doing right now as we uh, enter into this new year. Um, and I wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And the the issue that you anchor for the human sex trafficking is a big one, so um, keep up the the work in that area. And with that, it's uh, my opportunity to wish all of you a happy new year. I would like to repeat that we were very pleased to be able to hold, albeit a lesser gathering because of COVID, but a board reception for our C E C and other representatives. Uh, and it was delightful to be person to person with you, albeit with our masks. But um, I look forward to having opportunities for us to do that again throughout the year. At least one more or twice in the future. As far as the retreat, I would say that it was a very successful time for the board to be together. It was good learning and uh, more importantly, gave us an opportunity to talk out loud about things that were important for us as a board in our work together with all of you, looking at strategic priorities, honing those, and looking forward to a lot of work this year in support of strategic planning and all sorts of other big items such as budget that we heard about today. So we anticipate a busy year and are committed to doing our best as both individual board members and a unit to support our activities and do our job in looking at policies and leading this district.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
I I I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Haynes for her service to this college. I really appreciate all the work that she did, and and I'm sure she'll have a wonderful next chapter in her life, but I just wanted to acknowledge her and thank her for her many contributions to the system and to Scottsdale Community College, and thank you for letting me say so.
Sure. Thank you. We had an opportunity to say hi to Dr. um, Haynes at the uh, retreat reception and wish her well. So uh, thank you for adding your voice to that. With that, I want to say also uh, for those of you who want to know if we meet or connect with our congressional representatives at any level, the answer is yes, we do, but we will not be going to D C this year for a legislative summit. We'll be sticking around and doing our work here and concentrating with what's on our state agenda and paying attention certainly to what's going on at the federal level. But at this time, we're not traveling there. I want to thank everyone for their reports this evening, and as we establish future agendas, we'll take in mind what is important to bring forward in work sessions, et cetera. So with that, our next scheduled meeting right now is February fifteen twenty twenty-two for the agenda review. That will be virtual. There may in fact be a work session attached to that. Stay tuned. We'll see. And then on February twenty-two twenty twenty-two, we will have our regular board meeting at six thirty. That also will be virtual. So with that, moving forward, thank you Elsa for coordinating us again this evening and for our tech support. With that, good night, everyone and board members. I want to remind you that we're moving into an executive session. So we will leave our connection here and regroup around a Google connection in a few moments. So the meeting stands adjourned, and board members, I'll meet you online in a few minutes. Thank you.